I'd like to call the meeting to order. If we could have a moment of silence. Plaxton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members of all district schools, the Herald Room, the suburban trends, the record, messenger of West Milford Town Hall, the county superintendent's office, the board attorney, cable vision of Warwick and West Milford TV 77, and posted in the administrative building. Covers of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, township library, and all district schools. Roll call please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Sotovich, Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mrs. Jergensen.
Here.
Mr. Lippie.
Here.
Mrs. Markward.
Here.
Mrs. Romeo.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here.
Mrs. Rokano.
Here.
Mrs. Lott.
Here. Superintendent's report, Dr. Kitchen.
Yes, not much this evening, just a couple of things I wanted to highlight. So, we had our onsite decision day, I believe it was last week, and for those of you who are not aware, onsite decision day is the day that our students have the opportunity to sit down with individuals from several different colleges and their admissions team, and they find out in the moment whether or not they're getting into those schools. It's something that our guidance office puts on, it was an unbelievably well-attended event. Kids were super excited, kids were super nervous. I've got a feeling our student app is probably gonna be getting into some details on that because of how thorough she is, so I don't want to steal any of her thunder, but yeah, it was really a great event, so it was great to see. I wish they had something like that when I was in high school, and it really was great. I also wanted to announce, these next two are kind of combined, so our Governor's Educator of the Year and Governor's Educational Service Professional of the Year. For the past few years, that is not something that West Milford School District has participated in, really excited to bring it back this year. You know, it's really important that we have, when we have the opportunity to honor our teachers and recognize them, that we do so. So, we did, we have a Teacher of the Year from all of our buildings, we have a Net Service Professional from, I believe, I believe almost one of our buildings has a Net Service Professional. So, really, it's a great opportunity, Mr. Novak and I got the chance to bounce around to all of our schools and congratulate the individuals, I think we might have one or two left we have to pop into, but we were there for most of the actual presentations, and they were so excited, blown away by the recognition from their colleagues, so really, really excited to bring that back. The other thing that I wanted to share is something that we're doing that is, I think, pretty unique, I'm not sure of any other districts that are doing this, but I spent the past couple of years on the county selection board, for Sussex County, obviously, and in the process of doing that, I've gotten to see firsthand how unbelievably time-consuming the application is for county teacher of the year. I think it's in our district's best interest that we have people that are interested in putting in for that, but I actually, I spoke to the former winners, because they were on the selection committee, and they said it took about eight or nine hours for them to write their application, and that, and the individual who shared that with me said that she's not somebody who really spends a lot of time second-guessing and going back, that's just how long it took her to put it together. So, while we were brainstorming, and Dan and I really felt as though if we have teachers who are interested in applying for county teacher of the year, that we should be giving them the time to do that, so the plan is, if they choose to apply, and some of them may not, but if they choose to apply, we'll be giving them a comp day to work on that application to become, hopefully, considered for county teacher of the year, and if they choose not to apply, they won't get that comp day. But I do think it's something that's pretty unique, but it also, hopefully, encourages our staff to take that recognition beyond just the district, and hopefully, we have some county teachers of the year or Ed Show's professionals of the year. And then, last but not least, I'll turn it over to our student representative, Megan Seidman, who can take it away.
Thank you, good evening. Here's a debrief on all things West Milford this December. West Milford High School's Women's Equality and Empowerment Club held a toy drive for Oasis, a safety event for women and children, that began December 5th and ended today, December 17th. The women's club raised 133 toys across the homeroom, with Mr. McKinney's philosophy homeroom winning a donut and hot chocolate breakfast, which they may enjoy on Friday, December 20th, due to their donations of 34 toys over 14 students. Mr. Rose's sophomore English homeroom did donate the most, with 49 toys over 29 students. Thank you to all who participated. Alex Shamblyn's second annual memorial toy drive began on December 4th and ends tomorrow, December 18th. Alex Shamblyn was a child who was chronically ill for many years during his life, causing him to spend a few hospital stays before Christmas. He was always upset for those who didn't get the chance to go home to get a Christmas gift. You can still donate unused wrapped toys to West Milford Pharmacy, West Milford High School, Milford Manor Rehab Center, or West Parkway Medical in his name. Onsite Decision Day was held on December 5th. This event featured 28 different colleges from across the state of New Jersey, many of which offered free applications for those who participated. This was the 29th anniversary of Onsite Decision Day at West Milford High School. There were 100 seniors who participated, with a total of 280 appointments, so a big success. West Milford High School held its December SAT on the 7th. Scores for those participating will be released two to four weeks after the testing date. December 11th was extremely eventful across West Milford. For the middle school, this was the day of the holiday concert band, whose footage and sweet music is publicly available to enjoy again on the West Milford TV Science YouTube channel. For West Milford High School, this was the day of the seasonal recasement. Led by award-winning Mr. Jordan and his numerous TV science classes, this featured various skits and edits of the athletic and academic accomplishments of the West Milford High School students thus far. Lastly, on December 11th, West Milford High School posted that Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery, or the ASVAB, testing for students interested in pursuing careers in the military. This assessment provided a valuable opportunity for our students to explore their skills and aptitudes as they consider their future goals. To further support these students, a career workshop and post-test interpretation event will be held on January 8th during the school day. This follow-up activity is designed to help students understand their ASVAB results and guide them towards aligning their strengths with career pathways in the military or other fields of interest. Our guidance department is proud to offer these opportunities as part of their ongoing commitment to helping all students achieve their goals and prepare for success beyond high school. On December 13th, West Milford High School's Heroes in Cool Kids program, as well as the Middle School Sidekicks program, visited the elementary schools and taught their first lesson on resilience. It went very well. During festive gear and school spirit, December 16th to December 20th is the West Milford High School's Holiday Spirit Week. Monday was supposed to be PJ and comfy clothes day, but this was mayor reality when school was canceled due to the winter mix and we wore comfy clothes at home. Tuesday was Wear Red and/or Green Day. Wednesday is Ugly Sweater Day. Thursday is Grinch Day. And Friday is Holiday Headgear Day. Today, December 17th, the Marines visited the West Milford High School cafeteria. During lunch and/or free periods, students were able to speak with Marines, to learn about their experiences, and to be exposed to further career options. Students were also able to earn a free lanyard by doing pull-ups with the provided bar. It was very nice. From 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM tonight at the high school auditorium, the senior class council is hosting a movie night featuring everyone's favorite creative Christmas film, Home Alone. Admission is $3, and all profits from entry, as well as from food and drinks, sold. Will go towards the class of 2025's from this spring. Now, for a brief look into the future. Grab your loved ones and prepare your hot chocolate. The holiday break is to span from December 21st to January 1st. Elementary school parents and staff, this one is for you. As the middle school and high schoolers already had theirs, get ready for parent teacher conferences, or K-5 across the district, to be held on January 6th and January 7th. Start the new year prepared for college. On January 8th at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium, the guidance department is hosting its annual financial aid night. A representative from the NJ Higher Education Assistance Authority, or HESA, will speak to us about types of financial aid, differences between public and private post-secondary institutions, options for saving for college in New Jersey, and more. This event is appropriate for all high school grade levels, as it is never too early to talk about financial aid, and parents and students are both welcome. Lastly, get your fun facts and quick answers ready. The PTSO will be hosting a trivia night, or IDOL, in January 2025, and will then hold one for students in March. Thank you for your time tonight. I look forward to updating you on our beloved West Milford next month. Please enjoy the rest of your meeting and happy holidays.
Megan, thank you so much, that was excellent, as always, and I know last meeting you were talking about finding a way to sort of share out your reports, since it is so thorough, so more recently than that, we were having a conversation, so our board is aware that we're looking to roll out a new website, and we're still hoping that January 1st is a feasible start date, but we want to make sure it is perfect before we roll it out, so there isn't any flaws in that. But within that, what I would like to do is, on our Board of Ed page, I would like to put a little, a little spot where we can take the reports that you put together, and we can put them on there and link them, so that people have the opportunity to go back and follow up, as long as that's where I'm with you, so.
That sounds fantastic, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, that was really great. The only other thing I did not have on here is just a reminder that we're looking to roll out our Board Docs platform in January, and as of this morning, we now have all of our board members that will be on the board come January, will be trained, I didn't want to make Mrs. Romeo spend much time during training, but we are trained, we are prepared, and we're ready to go for a January rollout, with the tentative plan being to do it in the January 2nd reword meeting, which is a nice light agenda in case we have any hiccups. That's all from our board.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent's report, Mr. Novak.
Yeah, I want to echo Brian's comments of, you know, how thorough Signor is every time, so many of the things that I want to talk about are in your report, so thank you. But I was gonna keep it brief tonight and just talk about the update to our conference schedule for this year, as was mentioned. We had a successful process on November 25th and 26th for our middle school and high school conferences, as was, I guess, typical to past practice. During that time, our elementary staff were, they had a early dismissal, but they didn't have conferences, and during that time, they worked in their classrooms, and they put together some information for parents to go home. So, those, that information went home prior to Thanksgiving, and now we're looking forward to parent teacher conferences for our elementary students on January 6th and January 7th, while our middle school and high school staff have early dismissals on those days, on those days, and I've explained in the past, that the rationale for early dismissals on both sets of days are due to our transportation. So, in order for us to accommodate, in order for us to accommodate the process for our elementary staff to be able to sit at a parent teacher conference with the end-of-term report card, which is one of the reasons for this change, we had to be able to do early dismissal for both sets. One of the, I guess, processes we're going to follow through with, after the 6th and the 7th, we're gonna release a survey to our staff, and also a survey to parents, just to get feedback regarding, you know, how that, how the change went, and feedback on the process. So, we are tentatively planning for that process to take place again next year, but we are gonna take a look at the feedback to see, you know, if it's, if it has value, and if we're gonna continue it, and also if it needs to be adjusted in some regard. So, just wanted to fill in everyone on that, on that process.
Before you go on, can I ask a question? I haven't seen the elementary school's report card, but is it the same for pre-K to grade 5?
You have a report card?
Yeah.
The report card varies by grade based on the standards. It's a, it's, we call it a hybrid report card, there's a variety of report cards that are out there, we have.
So, we have a standard to these report cards, so every grade that was different?
Yes.
Okay.
Our fifth grade report card is the only report card left in the elementary schools that still has the classic rating with A, B, C, et cetera, grades kindergarten through 4. Students are graded on a scale of 1 through 4, that correlates with language that is geared closer to these standards, meaning approaching grade level standards, meeting grade level standards, exceeding grade level standards, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. Special reports and correspondence, Mr. Schultz.
Sure, I, the minutes, excuse me, for the November 19th, 2024 workshop regular meeting, and the minutes for the November 19th, 2024 executive session.
Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, presidential report. So, just a couple of things, I'll go over the, one thing that is on here first, so the results are finalized, just a quick update, myself, Claire Lockwood, Teresa Dwyer, and Raymond Guarino will be the three incoming board members sworn in at the reword meeting next month on the 2nd. I just also want to say a big thank you to Kate Romeo, this is her last meeting, she's outgoing, there'll be more in new business on that, but just an acknowledgement of the results that have been finalized finally, from the county and the state, and those were the three that will be coming on to the board in January. The other thing I wanted to say was, two things, Frozen, the new play that Paradise Noel put on last week and over the weekend, it's new for that elementary school to put on a play, and I was, had the pleasure of going on Friday, and it was amazing. I feel like I just compliment the plays all the time, no matter where they are, Magpin, the high school, and now the elementary. I mean, there were seven, I think, a little over 75 cast members ranging in age from, I think, kindergarten up until fifth grade, it was a filled all-purpose room with parents and children, and it was just amazing, so great job, and looking forward to what you bring next year. The other thing that I just wanted to mention was, I had the pleasure of going to the recent volleyball tournament in honor for Julian, who, for those that don't know, he's a student in one of our elementary schools who's, you know, gotten sick again for the fourth time. And I just want to say, and I guess I can feel myself tearing up on this, because that night, to me, as an audience member, was amazing, to see the staff, the students, and everyone that just came out to support this little boy who's, again, going through such a terrible thing, but the atmosphere, it was amazing, I heard they raised a little over $4,000 for his family, and Julian, we're thinking of you, and we're wishing you and your family all the best, and it was just a great, great night. I also want to give a big shout-out to our student representative, who played a huge part, I understand, in organizing that, and it was the night after the board meeting where you blew us all away with your, your report, as you always do, every week, and then you blew me away too, by just off the cuff, grabbing the microphone at the end and giving this amazing speech from your heart, and thanking everyone, and just, Megan, kudos to you, because I think you're gonna be here one day. You're definitely doing much better than me, but I just, I just wanted to point that out about the volleyball tournament. And on that note, that's it from my report, so we'll move on to public comments, which is anything that is on the agenda. So, before I go in to see if I have to speak the, you know, the verbatim what I have to, has anyone signed up, Mr. Schultz?
No, nobody's signed up.
Is there anyone that is wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion, move to close? I love it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, Dr. Kitchen, can we adopt the agenda as presented, or are there some?
Ten very minor changes, they're almost identical to one another, so under personnel, numbers five and seven, the words pro-rated should have been listed in there for the samples.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Numbers five and seven? Under personnel, should say pro-rated. Well, just pro-rated for the time period that they are applicable to.
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as presented with the two changes on five and seven under personnel.
Second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Education, Mrs. Dwyer.
I'd like to move items 1 through 12 for approval.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Mr. Schultz.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jergensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Rokano?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
I abstain on 12, because I can't remember what each one of these are, and yes on everything else.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Markward?
Yes.
Mrs. Lott?
Yes.
Personnel, Student Affairs, Mrs. Van Dyke.
I'd like to move items 1 through, 1 through 27, and then hand carry motion 28.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Mr. Schultz.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Jergensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Rokano?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Markward?
Yes.
Mrs. Lott?
Abstain on number 2, yes to everything else. Operations and Finance, Mr. Lippie.
I'd like to move operations and finance, numbers 1 through 8.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Mr. Schultz.
Just real quick, on number 1, it talks about the cost for the electricity and the people in school, and I just want to thank our administrative staff, starting our management staff, everybody that, and jumping in and getting this done. It was a holiday weekend, but they got it done, and it's just an amazing accomplishment. If you don't know exactly what they did, to me, it's impressive.
Noteworthy on that is that those things are also all being submitted to insurance for approval, we don't anticipate any issues there, but we'll say, and if there were an issue, we would fight it, because obviously, something that we feel strongly should fall into that category, so. But the primary thank you goes to Doug Glenn, he put in a lot of effort into coordinating all of this, so while we were all putting, you know, effort from our own seats, he was the one that was sort of boots-in-the-ground dealing with most of it, so he deserves the most of the credit.
Thank you, Claire, I have a question.
Sure.
Number 2, if this is approved, what's the timeline? Like, what do we foresee as a special education audit does that take? Take one, six months, a year?
She said it'd be about 10 weeks sporadically, I think it was a tool of 55 hours over the time. I'd love for it to run a, kind of run during the budget season for the planning, so we can incorporate some of the findings into the budget for next year, find some savings.
Great, thank you.
Pretty sure that that was put in your packet too, right, as a paperwork?
Yeah, yeah, I actually, it was all with my minutes.
Yeah, so it's all in that too. Anyone else? Seeing none, roll call please.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Rokano?
Yes.
Mrs. Jergensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Recuse on 7, yes on everything else.
Mrs. Markward?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Lott?
Yes.
Okay, under operations and finance, I'd like to move number 9 through 12.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Rokano?
Yes.
Mrs. Jergensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Recuse.
Mrs. Markward?
Abstain.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Abstain.
Mrs. Lott?
Yes.
Operations and Finance, I'd like to move 10 through 13 through concluded.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Rokano?
Yes.
Mrs. Jergensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Sotovich?
Abstain.
Thanks, fellas.
Mr. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Markward?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Lott?
Yes.
All is seen, Mr. Sotovich, or I can ask Mrs. Markward to do it also?
Alec, item number 1, 1 and 2 under policy.
Second. Thanks, Paul. Any discussion?
Just that both of these, very happy to see these, and hopefully, the new policy and the expectations conduct that there is a lasting competitive, the second one, will be read and followed by members and visitors alike.
Great comment, I'd like to add to that and say, please make sure that your administration knows that number 1 is now a policy, as this is the second reading, because we didn't have a policy before, and also, Policy Committee, if you would please add that to be reviewed for what you want it to be, because we're unsure that we were approving what they already do, and so, really needs to be reviewed again very soon, but also, the administration needs to know that it's now a policy, so, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, and just to put a clarification, so there was a policy in place that said that we would honor student achievement, but there wasn't a regulation in place that identified how, so, and to Kate's point, the goal of the Policy Committee was not to figure out how we wanted to honor student achievement, but just to get something that supported what we were already doing, knowing that it could be revisited, but for now, we wanted our, our regulation to support our current practice.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Sotovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Jergensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
I don't like the averages, but yes.
Mrs. Rokano?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Markward?
Yes.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Lott?
Yes.
Hand carry number 2, negotiations, Mr. Rokano?
I would like to move items 1 and 2 under negotiations.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Mr. Schultz.
Mrs. Rokano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jergensen?
Yes.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mr. Sotovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstain.
Mrs. Markward?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Lott?
Yes.
Many reports liaisons, parks and recs, Mrs. Dwyer?
There was no meeting because there was no quorum, so we had to cancel it.
Thank you. Safety, Mrs. Rokano and Mrs. Dwyer?
We have had a meeting held.
We will have one in January, now that we've finished all, so we just got the final report for all of the individual site audits, and we're planning for a meeting, more information, and I know that Mr. Glenn was working on that being scheduled, because he wants to make sure. make sure that Jim Van Barra from the State Police is available to join us. I think he's looking at the possibility of scheduling that, that second week in January, but hopefully more information to follow within the next twenty-four to forty-eight hours.
Great. Thank you. Superintendent's roundtable, Mrs. O'Conne, Mrs. Van Dyke?
That would be me, I guess, because I was at roundtable. We met on the twelfth. They, on the agenda, there were items about the calendar, which we, I think, already approved tonight. They did ask a few questions about next year, that we get some information ahead of time, so that we're a year ahead, even though we're approving two-year calendars, just so that we have a year ahead of information.
Yeah, I think the request was that we approve one calendar each year. Obviously, this year we're approving two, that we were always two years ahead, which I really don't see too much of an issue with. So I think that that's really appropriate. So as long as we're prepared to do so, you know, a year from now, you'll see the calendar for, you know, three years from now.
They discussed the progress reports, and Mr. Novak and Dr. Kitchen said that they're going to be looking at the progress reports moving forward for next year, after they see how everything works at the conferences, and see the feedback from the parents, and see if the conferences will work out, continue to stay in January. They just asked about the presentation nights, like when we have big events, if we can try to make sure that we're not backing them up with other things, when there's other things going on. I guess that's another calendar-related issue. Kindergarten, they asked about kindergarten registration. We're trying to get as much information out as possible, anticipating opening of, the registration is in January, like in the past, and that we hope that was Thrill Share, that's the new website.
So, so APTG? APTG is the host of the new website. Thrill Share is the communication tool that is packaged with that.
And that if, maybe we could ask the mayor to post on her social media when the registration is open for the kindergarten. We talked, Dr. Kitchen and Mr. Novak talked about the upgrade to the website. They were asking about the timeline, and Dr. Kitchen shared that the goal is to have it up for January second, but that it's not a hard, hard date, January second, because we want to make sure that everything is on there, that we want to be on there, and that it looks how it should. They asked about the athletic comp, if the athletic calendar would be added into that, and Dr. Kitchen was going to be following up with them about that. They did ask again about late buses for the spring, and, yeah, the spring, I think it was the spring.
The question was about winter and spring, which has not been budgeted for, but we did feel as though the fall was the time where it was the most impactful, just based on activities that were taking place. Winter seemed to be the least needed, and spring obviously would be, would be in the middle there somewhere, but it's definitely been something that we've had some questions about. So, more information to follow there, and as we get into budget season, we can also look at the possibility of budgeting for that. But we'd like to gather some more information on how much has been used. So we're going to follow up with transportation, see if we can get some numbers on how many kids were actually taking advantage of it, because my understanding is that as much as we want to make sure we're being supportive, there were not that many students who were utilizing that specific late, late bus.
And they also raised the question of the bus drivers during, you know, getting new, how recruiting new bus drivers. And again, it's the same conversation. We're doing everything we can, everything's good around us, and Dr. Kitchen talked about maybe putting up, putting up the banners, and we're, we're open to any ideas that anyone has, and how we can recruit some more bus drivers. And that was about it.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Dyke. The State County School Boards Association, I know I said it, okay? Okay, did anyone else? Okay, so nothing for the State County School Boards Association, New Jersey School Boards Association, Mrs. Sotovich?
I just want to say that I was right, that those who went to the workshop had a great time and brought back a lot of great ideas, and I'm just going to do a little bit of this. Just kidding, but thank you so much for attending, and I really hope that we continue that as a board, to make sure that we enrich ourselves in a professional development sense all the time, because when we come to this table and bring those types of ideas to everybody else to see, only great things come of it. And that's been my experience, and I think that that continues to be the experience. So, that's the only report that I have in legislative, I have no report.
I was actually just looking through my notes, because I just wanted to mention about the delegate assembly that I did happen to attend. I don't have it on my phone, but briefly, there were seven resolutions considered, six passed, one failed. It's an amazing day. Very long drive, it's about a two-hour drive, but it's very eye-opening. And speaking to, you know, workshop, I think it's something that everyone should do at least once. Definitely, they do a lot of business there, New Jersey School Boards. They work very hard in listening to what the districts put forth, and giving their feedback. It's definitely a great experience, so, that.
Yeah, it's really, it's so professionally run.
Yes.
And the structure of that meeting is just what every school board could probably benefit from.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And again, the same as the last time, because I did go to the previous one, six months ago. It seems to be the same districts that bring multiple to these. Last time, I forget what district it was. This time, it was another district that brought three this time. But there was some, I mean, there was some, some good, I mean, I could definitely speak to what the resolutions were, when I have more detail. I do have a little notes here, but I don't, I guess I'll just not get into it today, because I don't have my full notes. But it definitely is worthy, going and experiencing it at least once. Legislative, Mr. Sotovich? Anything?
No report.
Technology oversight, Mr. Lippie, and Mrs. Markmore?
No report.
And Township Board of Education Joint Committee, Mr. Schultz, I don't think there's anything on that either, right? We haven't had a meeting, so no report on that. West Milford Municipal Alliance, Mrs. Van Dyke, and Mrs. Jergensen?
That would be me again. The, the alliance met on Monday, December ninth. Unfortunately, again, they didn't have a quorum, so they could not go on their, their minutes and things like that. They did discuss the recent survey that went out to the public on the opioid money that the community has received, and how they need to, they want to utilize it. They were doing a presentation on December eleventh to the council about it. They, we also talked about, they're talking about some changes to the meetings for 2025. Nothing was decided. They also spoke about the Wellness Family Fun Festival, which will be April fifth, and it will be at the high school. That's kind of in place of the health fair that they did last time. And unfortunately, there wasn't much discussion, because there weren't a lot of people out there, or online, if they're able to do it. And I believe the next meeting is January thirteenth. And if anybody would like to go, I will not be here, so if you're welcome to, if anything, like this.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Dyke. Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, Mrs. Markmore?
Do we know when our next meeting?
January fifteenth.
January fifteenth? I was really loud, sorry about that. Very enthusiastic about the next meeting, January fifteenth, seven o'clock, at Islander Gate.
Okay, that's it for committee reports and liaisons. Old business. Anyone have any old business, Mrs. Romeo?
Other than the topic of just communication, I have a question on old business. Introducing, sorry, but Nathaniel Simon Esquire is our attorney here tonight, and I'm just curious, when was the board told that Angie wasn't, Andy Brown wasn't coming, and that Nathaniel was going to be here tonight? Or did we know, when did we know that?
We did discuss it at committees.
Oh, not on the committees?
No, I told, I told you in the committee, it was told in all the committees.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But I, I found out from Dr. Kitchen.
Okay, that answers that prior to committees. Hi, Nathaniel, you don't have a name tag, so I just give you a stand. Thanks. I'm a mother, so I'll make a motion to close all business.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? New business. So we have a motion. Would you like me to read the motion, Dr. Kitchen?
Sure.
Okay, so this motion, I guess, do we have to move it first, or can I read it, and then we can do it? Can I read it? So, this motion, whereas Mrs. Kate Romeo has served as a prominent member of the West Milford Board of Education from January 2015 until December 2024, and whereas Mrs. Romeo has diligently chaired the Policy Committee, served on the Education Committee, Personnel Committee, Operations and Finance Committee, and Policy Committee, and was a liaison for the West Milford Municipal Alliance Committee, formerly known as CASA, the Legislative Committee, and the Township Board of Education Committee, and whereas Mrs. Romeo also served as the Board President from January 2023 until December 2023. And whereas Mrs. Romeo held a promise to the welfare of our students in our decisions, and served with great skill and dedication. And whereas her service on the board has broader the respect of her colleagues on the board, the administrative staff, and the teaching and support staff. Now therefore being resolved, the Board of Education, on behalf of the grateful community, Public League acknowledges and expresses its sincerest appreciation to Mrs. Romeo for her outstanding contributions to the West Milford Township Public School District, and be it further resolved that this resolution will spread upon the minutes of the workshop regular meeting of the Board of Education of December seventeenth, 2024, and presented to Mrs. Kate Romeo. So, good night.
I'll just read really quick the plaque, so it has Kate's name on there, years of service, and it says, "In grateful appreciation for your dedicated service to the children of the West Milford Township Public School."
Yeah, so, Mrs. Simon just said this, so we need to, I need a motion to approve the following resolution, and a second, and if you second it, well.
Thank you.
And, sure, thanks.
We're in the discussion portion of this, I'd like to discuss my colleague, please.
Well, so, no, so, again, so I'm going to open it. Shall we open it up to Mrs. Romeo first?
No, I'll go last. Let will go before me.
Thank you. Kate, thank you so much for serving the township. It has been so wonderful to see people that have passion for things. And when the passion is your township, and the passion is the students, and you bring all of your passion to the table, we can all agree, right, she brings that passion to the table, it makes a difference in children's lives. And you know that there has been impact during the course of this that you've had in somebody's life in some aspect, and you bring so much to the table, and it's because you care. And it's been a real honor, and maybe I'll reconsider it down the road.
Anyone else? Mrs. O'Conne?
I texted Kate earlier today, but I've known Kate for thirty years. We went to high school together, and I just want to say, I've enjoyed these six years, and, you know, I, we didn't always agree, but we respected each other, and I do appreciate everything you've taught me with your breadth of experience. So, thank you.
Anyone else, Mr. Lippie?
Just want to say thank you, First President. Serving the city, you're a guide and help me, you help me. Don't always agree with it, but we disagree well together. Thank you very much for bringing your passion to everyone here. Appreciate it.
I'd also like to say something about Ms. Kate Romeo. When I met her, she was Ms. Kate Kelly, and she was one of the best teachers I've ever had, and you are the reason why you're sitting here. So I'm going to be really upset that you're leaving, but I'll still call you.
Nate, did you get that zoom in?
Anyone else?
Sorry, I missed the tears.
I've known Kate many, many years. She went to high school with my daughter, and I watched her grow up, and it's been a pleasure to serve her. Good luck.
Kate, I know we haven't known each other that long, but I feel like in a very short span, we've gotten to know each other pretty well. And I think that, you know, it's always bittersweet when you have a turnover on the board, because it's opportunity for new, excited voices to come on to here, but you lose people that are dedicated to the community. And I think, you know, again, to echo Will's point, I don't think anybody can question how much I care about this, this community, and these schools. So thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Okay, so I just wanted to say thank you, Kate. We ran together three years ago, not really knowing each other then, right? And I think we got to know each other pretty quickly. Run, and it was quite a run. No one can say that you don't have passion, because you definitely have passion for what you do. And we haven't always agreed either, but I feel like we've always listened to each other and heard each other's views, and come out on the other side. So, enjoy, enjoy the time you're going to get back. Mrs. Romeo, would you like to say anything?
Of course. You know, I'm not even without a little speech. I guess, there's still all my passion. Yeah, it's been an experience, and it's with both gratitude and bittersweet emotion that today I say goodbye after six incredible years on the Board of Education. This journey has been one of group, learning, and service. And as I reflect on my time here, I realize how much that I have learned, not just about our district, not just about each one of you, but about the world, about others, and most importantly, about myself. I have served at this table, I don't know what's going on with that, but we'll just try and do one. I've served at this table with one Director of Education, one Assistant Superintendent, three Superintendents, two Business Administrators, two Attorneys, three Directors of Special Education, and sixteen different Board of Education members. When I first embarked on this journey, I came with good intentions, a really kind heart, and a strong desire to make a difference. I remember speaking during, I did a campaign, but I guess we would call it my first campaign, when we were invited to the place in the woods. Camp, yeah. And I remember telling everyone about a Superintendent that I worked for, a professional who taught me a lesson that I see with me throughout my time on this board, and throughout all things that I do. She said that when parents send their children to school, a piece of their heart goes to school without them. And with that in mind, I've always tried to honor that responsibility. For the past six years, I've done my best to protect the hearts of our community, the hearts of our students, the hearts of our families who trust us to guide their children on their educational journey. I took that role very seriously every single day, knowing that every single decision that we made had an impact, big or small, on someone's future. I'm incredibly proud of the work that we have done together, improving our schools, supporting our teachers, and ensuring that our students have the resources and opportunities that they need to thrive. But beyond the policies, the hours of reading, and the meetings, what I've taken away most from this experience is the deep sense of community that we share. This board, our staff, our parents, and our students have shown me the true meaning of collaboration, commitment, and real support. I started the history before we all knew that we leave that. I started the history before we all knew the really bad word. Covid. And even through the difficulties of Covid, we were strong as a board. We were resilient, and we made great decisions working together. Um, it's a time that I look back, um, as stressful, but yet, um, it probably was one of the times where we had the least amount of arguments because it was really, everyone was focused on safety and security and, and, um, as a board, we were very, very strong. Um, however, as with any journey, sometimes the path is not easy. This year, unfortunately, I do feel that a toxic environment was created. Sometimes you enter into something with great intentions, but the people that you work with can make it feel impossible. I want to be clear, no one should ever feel unsafe in a volunteer position. A board like ours should be about building trust, fostering relationships, and working together for the betterment of our schools, our students, and our community, even when we disagree. And so I appreciate each one of you, um, pointing out that we did disagree. And that's part of being a board, and that's really an incredible part of leadership in how you grow, is communicating through your disagreements. In recent months, I've seen how hard it's become for people to speak freely or to express their ideas without hesitation or fear. That's not what our work should be about here. So if sitting behind this table is about confrontation for you, then really, this is the wrong place. I've always been transparent in my actions here, and I know that no one, whether you're behind that screen, you're my neighbor, or even sitting on this board with me for six years, no one is left wondering what Kate Romeo thinks. Um, I wear it on my sleeve, I'm going to tell you. Um, and with that, I've consistently advocated for our students and our staff because that's always been my priority. Another great superintendent that I know, excuse me, I'm sorry, recently said, "When you hold people accountable, it hurts feelings." And while I apologize if my actions have ever hurt anyone's feelings, I was here from day one to do what's right for our community and for the education of our children. And that requires honesty and integrity and an amazing amount of strength that I truly didn't even know that I had. I leave here proud of my accomplishments, even through the difficulties, but disheartened by the experience of last year. I will take all these lessons with me, and I'll continue to take the hybrid, strengthen my resolve to seek out healthy environments where my skills can be used and align with others that have the values of integrity, compassion, generosity, and kindness, all the things that I hope that our children are learning in our schools today. As I step away from this role, I'm also really excited for the relief of stress that my decision to not run again has brought to my family and my friends. I know that while this journey was incredibly fulfilling, it's come with its share of challenges for the people that I love. I'm deeply grateful for their unwavering support throughout this entire time. The number one question I've been asked more than anything is, why do you do that? Why do you fit in with that? You know? Um, and it really is about my passion for education. Um, and, uh, back to the thank yous. First and foremost, um, I need to thank my husband, um, who supports all of my gracie decisions in this life, um, and holds on to the word back home when I'm not there. Um, and my son, um, for revising my first speech because he said, "Mon ex-ami, you're graceful and kind, so be who you are." So this is my second speech. And, um, really, without those two men in my life, um, I wouldn't be who I am, and I wouldn't have the shirt that I have. And behind them is an entire crew of family, including the twelve children that I need to thank in my family. Sorry. Seven of them who were moved with the Westport change to Highlander Academy. Um, with that, I will say that the children in my life didn't realize that I wasn't the one, the sole person making these decisions. So Aunt Kate and Cousin Kate and, um, you know, that I've been called to some meetings where I had to sit down next to an elementary student and explain what the Board of Education is and how and why we make decisions that are best for everyone. Um, so I feel like my civic duty for sure in explaining to as many elementary school students of what we do here is the better good for all students, and it's not about making a decision for one child. And I felt that was my heart from day one. I often voted on things that were not best for my own child or the children in my family, but were best for the majority of the children of this district. Um, and that's a role to be in that sometimes feels really crappy. But it's the right thing to do. And again, that is real leadership, and, um, I feel like this was just another role in my life to strengthen my leadership skills. So with that, I want to thank my fellow members. Most of you will remain my friends for the rest of our lives. Tara will be on another thirty or forty, um, where I'm never going to change because I'm still that same girl that was on the field, happy field with you. And, um, Tara sent me some old picture frames, like remember all these? And, um, I've always been passionate about the things that I care about. Um, and I've always been somewhat of a, that outspoken individual, but always for the betterment of everyone. So thank you to all of you. Thank you to the district leadership. Um, your leadership skills, I'm sorry, I really need a tissue. Your leadership skills are unique, and it's been really cool to watch each of you grow. Although, um, only one out of the four of you started on this journey with me, um, I've seen each one of you really grow. Um, I will apologize for all of my heart, not that they're hard ever, because, thank you, thank you. I'll just apologize for my amount of questions, we'll just say that. Um, but I can't say that they're not going to continue. They just won't be from this microphone, they'll probably be from that one or hopefully in an email. And, uh, I want to thank the teachers and our staff and our parents for entrusting me with this responsibility. Thank you to the community for your support and engagement. It's truly been an honor to serve you. While my time as a board member is ending, I remain committed to our students and our schools. I'll always be here, um, and I'll always be cheering for our district and supporting the work that you all continue to do. I leave with the full heart, knowing that together, we've helped shape, shape a better future for our children. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Romeo.
We have two adjournments.
Yes, yes. So we have to, uh, close, right? A motion to, to close, and then all those in favor, we have all those in.
So I'll make a motion to close any business.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Was there anything else on? Kate, do you have a voice call?
Yes.
Okay. So, 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 let's reopen?
There's a motion to reopen.
Yes. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All those in favor of the resolution, uh, from Mrs. Romeo that was on the floor, right? Because we never closed it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, any new business, any more new business?
One's closing business.
Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, public comments, which is anything that anyone would like to speak on. It doesn't have to be on the agenda. Anyone signed up to speak, Mr. Schultz? Anyone wishing to speak? Okay, so I'm going to have to read, uh, the whole thing while you're signing in, Mrs. Stevenson. So all speakers will have five minutes to speak until a period of thirty minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. After speaking, all speakers are asked to sign the register provided and get their full name, group affiliation, and their address. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to have read the statement within the agenda regarding the regulations concerning public comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Mrs. Stevenson?
Thank you. Court Ms. Stevenson, three hundred and seven Ridge Road, West Milford, New Jersey. I am here tonight speaking as the co-president of the Highlander Education Foundation, just to give you a few great updates with our organization. We had a swap and share event, um, this past weekend where people from the community came and dropped off lots of goodies. We sorted through everything, laid everything out, and the next day, the community came again, and we handed them bags, and they shopped for free. It was an incredible event, um, definitely one that we will do again, probably not so close to the holidays, because that was a lot for this mom to organize, but it was a wonderful event. I also want to highlight for you a really incredible, um, pledge that we recently got from the West Milford Trust. So I'm going to read you part of this letter. "The trustees of the West Milford Trust are pleased to support the Highlander Education Foundation with a current donation of five thousand dollars to support the administration and development of ETF. And pledge an additional twenty-five hundred dollars to ETF annually for the next two years contingent upon the ETF maintaining at least twenty-five hundred dollars of revenues from other sources. ETF may utilize these pledges in matching plan program if it wishes to do so. If you did not know, the West Milford Trust was established by the late George F. Edberg Jr. for the benefits of West Milford's nonprofit entities. The trustees are proud to support the goals of ETF and wish to encourage community support as well. This is a huge deal and something that we are incredibly proud of." Um, so I just wanted to share that with you. We also have a brand new, excuse me, Highlander Highlight with a multitude of, um, people in it. We decided to highlight the firefighters in town. So we have found a teacher from Ashaw, Sarah Warren, who is a volunteer firefighter at Ashaw. We highlighted Kevin Claus, who graduated in two thousand and fifteen and is a Cade firefighter in, in Eastern Pennsylvania. We highlighted Dave Van Tassel, who graduated nineteen ninety-six, who is a Cade firefighter in Patterson. And then we went to the kids. I don't know if you are or are there, but there are quite a few volunteer high schoolers in our fire departments. Ryanie Sleffick, Joseph Casella, Glenn Dawson, Timothy Reinhardt, all got parent permission, by the way, to release their names and their pictures. I have copies for you, however, there is one mistake that I did not have a chance to fix, so please don't publish it anywhere yet, it is for your, um, review. This is something we are really proud of. We really want it in the hands of kids. We really want it in the hands of the community. So perhaps we can talk about how we can make that happen. We are in the throes of our teacher grants. We already have one, hopefully getting more. Please encourage the teachers to reach out and, um, talk to us about grants if they have any questions. I am happy to guide them through the process. Um, our next public meeting is on January seventh. It is virtual at seven P M. And I just want to say, uh, this is not the last chance you're going to see Kate Romeo because I am going to snap her right up from my foundation. Not only is Kate passionate, but she is smart, and she has such knowledge about the business of education. She has the urgency that is needed to help move our organization forward. And this will not be the last you see of her. May I come and bring you each a copy?
Yes.
It's because one of the kids, um, he said he's going to tech at school in Rhode Island in the tri-state area.
Um, it's, if you wouldn't notice a mistake, but if you see any mistakes, let me know.
While Mrs. Stevenson's passing those out, I just want to say thank you to her and the Ed Foundation, for sharing all of that. Look forward to hearing more about updates from the Ed Foundation and all the great things that are going on, especially with the, uh, the grants being rolled out. But I also want to thank the Ed Foundation for their flexibility. So you may or may not be aware, there was a scheduling conflict with a big fundraiser that I have upcoming for the Harlem Wizards. Uh, the scheduling conflict was entirely the district's fault, not the Ed Foundation, and that they were so flexible in trying to work with us and, and, um, make sure the dates work when we didn't have conflicting events. Uh, I don't think that the Harlem Wizards game and the high school play should be on the same night. And, uh, luckily, the Ed Foundation agreed and was willing to work together to date. Which, if you're not aware, it's really hard when you're working with an organization like the Harlem Wizards because, you know, they get booked up. So, uh, again, thank you for your flexibility. Thank you for sharing, and looking forward to hearing more from you.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevenson. Uh, anyone else wishing to speak?
Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And, uh, Mrs. McLeod, oh, you want to lead us into executive session?
At eight oh six, I am moved to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel appointments, resignations, current litigation matters, special education matters, negotiations, and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable. The board will be in executive session for approximately fifteen minutes. Action will not be taken, and we will adjourn from executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we will not be returning. I wanted to wish everyone a happy holiday and a healthy new year. See you in twenty twenty-five.